We're going to testify, United States of America, to the Republican Party's standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with the duty of justice for all.
I mean, I know a lot of people out there, I know it's not, I don't, I've been told, and I know.
So, as we know, if you're not here, it's because we've restricted the audience because of coronavirus nineteen, and thanks to Councilman Carbone's ingenuity, we're able to livestream this. And also, John Misha snuck in.
Snuck in.
Didn't have the...
I always sneak in.
Yes. So, anyway, let's start. I've been away the public comment period.
There's no one here.
We have one public comment that came in via email, but that's a topic on our agenda, which I think we can cover at that time.
Sorry about that. It's on silent. So, anyway, public comment, go ahead, say.
A public comment had to do with, what do you bring my...
The taxes on the library.
Yeah, whether the, having the town agree that they're going to take the L fund, which is library fund, off of the tax collection, whereas the library, school district, if it passes, will pick up that with their tax. And also, I want to clarify, a person also wanted clarification on the figures, which I have some figures that I came up with, which are pretty close, so we can go over those during that portion of the...
That's from Mrs. Gray.
That's Eastonville from Susan Gray.
It's from Susan Gray, yes.
Susan Gray. So, we're going to discuss that in number two, in discussion and updates, so if we could just hold off on that till we get to it. Okay? So, first on the discussion is the updates on the website from the Federal Security Director for TSA regarding COVID-19. Frank, you have come...
No, it's just that that's available if anybody's interested in what's the ongoing changes with TSA, the requirements. We met with TSA on, what's today, yesterday, and we had a meeting with them, discussed our plans and cleaning. Obviously, it's like everything else is changing constantly, so, but they just wanted that website there in case anybody on the board wanted to see, look for any information about what's going on, you can access that through that website, and give you updates every day.
All righty. Second is the library, school district, and Councilman Carbone.
There.
So, much for ingenuity.
There we go. All right, so I'm behind the camera anyway, but...
It's Frank.
You only got me.
What's that?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, it's laggy, yeah, it's a little lag there, so. So, Joseph Okha has some numbers. I calculated them as I found from the 2020 preparation of our town taxes. Some of his information, I believe, was on nineteen. So, total tax collected was $2,602,053. The L fund for the library was $607,430. So, if you divide the total tax collection into that, it's a 23.3% reduction in town taxes. So, total amount of tax collected would be $1,994,623. So, that would take our present rate down of town taxes with the library at $4.82, down to $3.70, rounded up. That would be without the library fund. So, presently, I use the figure of $100,000 property, because it's easier to figure if you're $65,000, you multiply by nine point six five. So, $100,000 property presently pays $482.06 for town tax with library. Without the library, it, $100,000 property pays $369.74. So, that's a savings of $112.53. Then the library, school tax would be $88.84. So, a person with a house or a property assessed for $100,000 would save $23.69 per year based on the present 2020 town taxes. So, in other words, a person, a taxpayer, assessment $100,000, is presently paying $112, $112.53 for the library under the present system. The same taxpayer would pay $88.84 for the library should it become a school district library. Total savings, $23.69 for $100,000 property. And I would, in my opinion, I would agree to take the L fund, the library funds that are collected for taxes, off of the collection of taxes for the town and let them collect their own. So, that would result in that savings for the taxpayers within the town of Messina.
Okay, so, just going to Mrs. Gray's point of view here, how do we, how do we demonstrate that? Because when we redo the, when we redo the budget, obviously, we're going to have items that we have to fund, and there's going to be cost of living increases, there's the two-point, there's the tax cap. So, how do you, how do you demonstrate that we're not re-appportioning that money elsewhere? How do, how can we, how can we get that assurance? Because I think it's difficult to show that they're going to save. The thing is, you're, we're telling everybody they're going to save $23. How is that going to be demonstrated and clear to them that they're seeing $23 savings? Other than the fact that we removed it from the fund, how do they know we're not going to reuse that somewhere else? And that's the point of her question. And I don't think it's an easy thing to display, because like I say, when we redo the budget, we can't guarantee that their taxes are going to be down by $23 exactly.
Those numbers are based on 2020. Yes, obviously, there could be a 2% increase on the taxes that are collected without, including the library, which would show a gain, but if the library was still there, it would still also have that increase as well. So, you know, I guess you can say safely that taking the library, the L fund, off from town tax collected would be a decrease of roughly 23.3%.
And we've already made that commitment. I mean, we haven't passed through the motion or anything, but we plan, if it does go to the school district, then it would be the L fund. And as far as reapplying money somewhere else, I mean, I don't know, there's really nothing that would stop us from doing that. I mean, you know, you talk about going for a 2% tax increase, but theoretically, we could still use that money, and it wouldn't increase the taxes at all, tax rate. So, I mean, it's just got to be our word that it's what we plan on doing. I don't know how else you're going to assure.
And it's just a concept of what they're, you know, we're going to, we're going to get taxed here, but we're both going to be saving taxes here, and if, if nothing changes over here, then they're not really not, they're really not saving.
I can assure you that I don't want to double tax myself. I don't want to tax myself on the library president and the library future and add more to my tax base anywhere than anybody else wants their taxes right now.
And I like the idea of trying to base it on the percentage versus the actual dollar amount.
Yeah, that's what that represents.
So, maybe we can show something...
Yeah, you may want to put that out there, because a lot of people ask me too, well, what does that mean to my pocket board? And the next question I get is, well, okay, so, for one year maybe, it'll be less here, but if we, going one more year, if it passes and it's less, we're still going to be paying some on, on top of our school taxes, and if they don't like that, they're going to come back the following year and have another vote. So, there's a lot of that going on in town.
That's speculation.
Yes, exactly.
Except that this is an initiative from the library, not from the town board. We're reacting to what, you know, with this lady, she has a legitimate question.
Right, but the whole idea is that we're giving the other communities the opportunity to help support the library, and it would resort in tax savings for the town of Messina. I mean, I, you know, the whole idea, or I mean, as far as I'm concerned, is not to keep that bundle of money and spend it on the supervisor's town truck or something, but, you know, I mean, I want to save the taxpayers' money.
And that sounds good.
And it does, and it does, and I agree that that's what we're going to do, because if you track something, the bottom line, though, is that mentality out there is, show me how, prove to me that that's going to happen, and I, and I think that's a, knowing how budgets are put together and everything, that's going to be a hard thing to show other than the fact that you've taken it out.
Well, I mean, like I said, right now, our present town tax rate is $4.82. Without the library, it'd be $3.69. Now, that doesn't include fire that you pay outside of the town of Messina, it doesn't include chargebacks or county taxes, so you have to look at your line item for town, we see the town taxes only. So, it's over a dollar savings per thousand on the town tax rate.
The other thing is, as we go year to year with the budget, from the budget preparation, you can almost guarantee that the library budget is not going to go down.
Right.
You know, you're funding well over $600,000 now. What is it going to be next year? What is it going to be the year after, and so on?
But then that's shared through the entire school district.
Right.
Communities within the school district.
Yes.
And I think that, and I think that should be the argument that's made here, people should understand that Messina is not going to be the continuing sole source funder of the library. That's, that's the whole purpose of this, is that there are more people than Messina that use this library, and there should be a commitment from those who use the library to support the library. So, I think that's the, that's the fundamental argument for this change. I think we lose sight of that when we get into, well, I'm saving 23 over here, but I'm spending so much over here, am I really saving $23? And that's, and that's unfortunate that that's represented that way. But yes.
So, what I would like, I don't, one, that we support the library going from the town entity to a school district self-support.
I'll make that motion. I support the library.
Second.
There it goes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. The other thing is just to, I don't know if we, you know, I definitely don't in a motion, I wouldn't think, but just if we would all agree that we wouldn't use that, use that money as a town councilman, you wouldn't want that money to be yours.
I would not love, right, that's, I guess that's the correct word. Would oppose using that.
Oppose, yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion. I don't want to be in emotion, I just have to say it. We have to say that as a commitment that we're going to make during the budget process.
That's your commitment.
Right, that's my commitment.
That sounds good to me.
Say it.
I think that would definitely motivate the town.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think, I'm committed to removing the L fund, the library funding from our collection of town taxes.
Deputy supervisor. And I have the same opinion, so. Hopefully, that will put all the people that are watching Facebook, put their...
We're going to five.
At ease. Yes, five people.
Watching, yeah.
Good. All righty. So, we'd like to, or we'd need to approve the minutes for December 18th and December 31st. It has to be one of you two gentlemen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. And January 6th is our organizational meeting. Can I get the motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry, January 26th.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry, February 29th.
I think it's February 26th, we're supposed to be. And in the minutes on February 26th, at least the draft that I received, unless it's been changed, the very last time during the meeting on that night, the motions were by Sam and by Sue, but they were not written in, at least the draft I got, maybe that's already been updated, I don't know. Those two are blank.
We can hold on to that one.
Or as amended.
As amended.
Make a motion as amended.
Is that what you're doing?
January 26th was a Sunday.
February 26th.
Is it February 26th or January?
February 26th, that's the top of mine.
So, they're down to November.
Yeah.
February 26th.
Oh, they're switched. It was January 29th.
Oh.
And February 26th.
Okay.
That's what it was.
All right, and then again, unless that was, those two names are not added.
So, a motion is made as amended.
Made a motion as amended, February 26th.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. Then we need a resolution to correct the October 30, 2019 minutes by adding a resolution which we approved to higher Peggy Musaw to help with the new budget audit software at a fee not to exceed $2,000. It was passed but not reflected in those minutes.
Before you do that, can you change your last name? Because it's M-O-U-S-A-W.
None.
That was mine.
Not like yours.
Right.
All right, one of you two gentlemen, fine councilman?
So.
Seconded by Carbone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. We need a resolution to correct November 7th minutes by adding a resolution authorizing the town to spend up to $15,000 for new dry hydrants in the township and for new extraction gear. This is for the fire department, boots, gloves, and helmets. It was passed but not reflected in the minutes.
I'll make that...
Who's not reading these minutes?
I'll make that motion. Is there...
Second.
Does that include the one by the intake, the dry hydrant?
Yeah, well, there was more than one.
There's one on 37, kind of around 37.
Yeah. And then, where they're building the new bridge, are we doing that bridge?
No, it's, 37 is, I recall, you know, when you come to the Y, 46, 37 is the backways, so Earl's printer or something.
Oh, yeah, Earl's great, yeah. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's great for especially residents outside the town, outside the village within the township that don't have hydrants, it's nice to have those available.
All righty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. Looking for permission to add the cost of a printer for the Jet A fuel truck at the Messina Airport that is presently being built, that was approved last year, and that...
We want to put it in the existing truck that we have now.
Oh.
And, and the reason we're, I'm asking for that is because the airline, something's changed, they're requiring a credit ticket with gallons, date, time, and airport, so it must be from an audit standpoint or something. And it's, I, obviously, I called DTS, who installed the original meter, and for, obviously, installation in the actual printers, it's $2,360 to have it installed. I did verify that the new truck that we are having built already has that system in it.
So, this would be like a credit card.
Yeah, you give us a ticket, like a, you know, like a cash, like, yes.
That makes, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I think from an audit standpoint, they have to show where the fuel is coming from. And we do on occasion have somebody flies in with a private plane that picks Jet A, or always request a ticket, we just never have any ability to do that, so.
Make a motion to accept that.
Second. If I have to fully bunker it.
No, that's not, we don't have to.
You're correct.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. All righty, the 2018 already has been filed with the state comptroller, and we need to... Why do we need to agree with it? It's already been filed with the state comptroller.
Just not that you guys know that it's been done. That it's been done inside.
Looking for a resolution or a motion.
I'll share that with you, we need a resolution.
Get a motion.
We're going to accept that.
Submit it.
Sure.
Seconded by Mrs. Beller.
Who first, Bob?
Bob, Robert's first.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. So, we need a resolution to accept the prepared independent fee estimate of $385,536.70 for the Messina Airport runway, 523 rehabilitation design.
So moved, or is it for other?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Supervisor Nicola. Any questions of Frank on that?
We're just, sorry, that's going to be a vague project for our airport, that's our main runway, so it's a big project.
And that was one that, didn't you originally...
They, we were, we were going to do crack sealum, and they said, nope, FAA came back and said, spend 20 years, you need to resurface it, so they said, we'll give you the money for it.
Will it be any kind of shutdown, or will they be able to...
No, we'll have to use 927.
Will they cross it all over?
They will, but they, they'll be safety zones set up.
Okay.
That'll all be, that's all part of this design layout.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. Need a resolution to accept the prepared independent fee estimate of $127,501.35 for the Messina Airport taxiway C rehabilitation, construction, observation, and administration.
So moved.
Mrs. Beller?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carbone. Any questions of our airport manager?
This project will take place, hopefully, this year, the money's released in time. There's another item here, and I don't know why I didn't make the agenda, but I guess I'm just asking and informing the board, the, we want to advertise on April 6, 2020 for the taxiway C, taxiway C rehabilitation, general aviation rehabilitation and defense project. Along with that, we want to have bid meetings on April 16, pre-bid meetings on 2020, and a bid opening on April 24 of 2020. We're just looking for a notify you, if you're okay with all that.
Do you want to add a resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we're both encircled.
Okay. So, just so you're aware that it's going to take place.
Do you have a beautiful word?
I don't think so, I don't know. We need approval, just approval to say we're doing it, that you're okay with it?
I mean, we're, we're doing it, right?
Yep.
We got to do.
Okay, just, sure.
Oh, Pat wanted to make sure we're right in front of the board.
You're supposed to make sure everybody's on, is okay with it.
Yeah.
Summer help for that thing.
You've still got to do a vote on seven.
What's that?
You've still got to do a vote on seven.
I'll click on it.
Oh, I circled it, I thought we did.
No, we, we didn't.
Can you backspace that or back...
Sure, no, edit, I'll edit it.
All those in favor of that resolution?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. Summer help.
How many do we need?
We need one.
One?
We have three returning at now. Obviously, we're in a state of flux.
Yeah.
All I, all I'd like to do is have permission to advertise, we can pull the applications, and we can see where this all goes, and, you know, we maybe will hire, maybe we won't hire anybody, I'm sure based on what's going on, but at least we'd have the applications on our hand. We'd like to advertise the first two weeks of April.
I make a motion that we advertise for summer help for the highway or...
It's, it'll be the highway.
Second.
So, seconded by Carbone. So, as of, from what you think now, Frank, it's one open.
It's one open, three. Yeah, three returning and one open.
If we...
If, if we decide to take it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions so carry. So, before we get into the financial part, I just want to make note of what's been going on around here. As you know, the, we met on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. We worked in conjunction with the village government to close the town hall and start working on our essential and non-essential staffing. Today, we declared the mayor, and I declared a state of emergency for the town and the village, and we've scheduled some other department, well, the rest of the departments, the highway, the airport. Messina Electric is done there, scheduling and evaluating. The community center is still closed until further notice. They had, WIF was there, and the neighborhood center, I think, is still open. But the building is closed, the museum is closed, library is closed, but as I've sent out the note, while they're closed, employees are in there, they're coming up with an essential, non-essential staffing level is to still provide patrons with materials, books, and whatever else that the library has to offer. So, I sent you by email the state of emergency. I don't have a list.
Steve, when is it, like, scheduled to end right now? End of month, April 20th, was it?
At the end, oh, no. We've set everything up for, to end on March 31st, as it stands now, subject to change. It is confusing, some of the state rules and regulations are going down, and all of them.
I don't know if this is the time for it, or if you want to wait until the committee reports, but we met with Frank this morning on staffing and the use of personnel during this particular period, and MED did basically the same thing, right, Sam?
Mm-hmm.
You could jump in if you, if you want. They're prioritizing tasks and responsibilities. This is due Friday, renewing, reviewing supplies. Non-essential workers guidance, you know, what do they do when they're not working? If they're on call, they're on call, and they've got to, got to observe those. If they're not on call, then they're not on call. Segmented the work staff to stay open, to keep it open. Segmenting the work staff to stay open, to keep it open. They're putting this plate glass window up in the lobby of MED to protect the, the workers. You know, it's, it's like a movie theater thing. And they're still going to have to hand money and paper money. But it's, it would be, they feel that it would alleviate some of them. Because we still, I think they said about 10% of the people do pay for that. So in other words, they're doing the same thing that, that all of our agencies are doing.
They plan on coming out with a memorandum on, until they get that glass in place. I don't want to speak for them per se. I'd rather have their memorandum come out. They'd rather have people pay by, by check if possible. There's always that concern of contamination. On money, it could be on the check as well, but, but it's easier with a check or a money order where they can just put it in the mailbox. Where cash, you know, it's kind of tough to do that. So they're coming out with a, a mailer to all the payers and I guess I would stand by for that.
Right.
Under their direction. Employees are standing by. They're expected to be there at a moment's notice to respond if there is a power outage or necessity for their services. So some are working remotely at home with their computers and doing what they can that way, trying to keep everybody from contaminating each other, so. Something we're going to have to live with for a little while.
Well, I, I mean, it's, they're supposed to self-quarantine.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They're supposed to stay home and be available if there is a need for the highway, the airport, the town clerk is going to remain open. And well, you have your phone number posted if somebody needs something.
Phone and fax and both of our emails.
And the tax office is also going to have somebody available if there's any questions about, you know, court. Court, but they're not accepting any money or anything right now. They're just in there working. One of the other things that, as far as the town hall, with our phone system, we're able to forward phones. So if Brenda's working from home, the phone will go directly to her cell phone. So if you want to play jokes on her, just call her up all the time. Call the town.
And at the highway department, we're going to a two-man rotation. Basically, shift work is over. There'll be two guys there every day from six-thirty through eight o'clock. Everybody's aware, just like they've been saying, if there's a snow event or a emergency, they're on call. They're self-isolate at home. They're not traveling. They've got to be obviously ready and willing and able to come to work at a moment's notice. They will, once they're done their workday, they have to basically clean and sterilize what they've used, the vehicles they've used. And they, we will keep the building locked. And I, I had Brenda make me have some signs, some of it's the ones at the town hall. Numbers to contact, me or whoever, if someone's got an issue. There's no sense of like the public in if we're trying to keep, you know. So we will start that tomorrow. And at the airport, there's three, obviously, three employees. They, we're going to do shift work over there. We're going to have a morning called a day shift and an afternoon shift. There'll be two guys that will be on each day and one guy will be off. They'll rotate in and they'll continue to rotate in and out. Somebody will be off every day and two will work, but they won't be in contact. There'll be a half hour period between times that, where somebody leaves and somebody goes. Same, same thing, self-isolate, outside here, ready to come to work. Stress all subject to change, you know?
Right.
Steve, our office, so people know, is open only by appointment only.
I'd like to answer that real quick. The assessor's office has not been mentioned. And the assessor's office is totally able to work remotely in the truck, in the office. So I don't plan on being there 24 by 7 if nobody else is. Because I don't think I should, you know, have to be the only one. I definitely can do all my work on the road, at home, in the office. I can get phone calls into my email. I can do everything essentially that the county needs me to do right now. And they're also limiting our time to come out there right now either. So they have rotating schedules. I just notified. So if we have to do anything that, you know, requires us to go to the county, we, we can't just do it, you know? Willy-nilly, we have to go depending on their schedule. So I'm just throwing it out there because it hasn't been mentioned.
Right, it was mentioned in the essential staffing memo that I put out. Same sort of thing. You can forward your phones to?
Absolutely everything, yeah.
You have access to all your?
Absolutely everything. I do it all the time anyway.
And if anybody needs to get ahold of our world famous town attorney, good luck.
Always available for the phone board.
Nice. I meant to mention. And so the transfers and amendments? Anybody want to make a motion to accept those?
I'll make a motion.
Seconded. Seconded by Councilman Elsner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention so carried.
So you do, you do the transfer amendments, right?
Yes.
Okay, then they want to mention, everything's fine. You're seeing the budget transfers from airport contractual, library. We're not below anything to transfer money or short. It's new accounts that we set up. So I have to take it from the contractual and bring it over. We set up new detailed accounts for the airport right now. So right now, that's what you're seeing. Normally, you don't see that much right now at this time of year. But we set up different new accounts to make them more detailed. So I take them from one just to balance the other. That's all I'm doing right now.
Right.
We, the, what Brenda did was break down the, it's, when I first did budget, they basically, everything was contractual.
Right, yeah.
So you have no idea what, what that is and I had to go back, every year, go back and look at what we, you know, physically write down what we, you know, what you go where and get an idea what you should budget. So this should help us streamline the budget process. You'll have categories for certain things now, what we did before.
So just fine tuning, basically.
Yeah, making it easier to understand what we're spending our money.
And the auditorium should like that.
Right.
More detail is better.
Right, and the same thing with the library. We had to break down where you're in Messina.
Yeah.
Wasn't before. So we're, we're breaking it down. So that's why you say that also.
But you had to reconnect a copy of that for tomorrow. Sam, can I have a copy of your figures that you put out for the library too? Thank you.
Alright.
I'll type them up.
Thank you.
Move on war three. Seconded.
What? Pardon me?
War three.
Oh.
Now we did the transfer.
So?
I made a motion to accept it.
And Bob just answered apparently?
You signed the bill.
Yeah, I did. So I should, these are, right?
Okay.
It's okay. Listen, so seconded by Mr. Beller.
Alex. Alex, I've been saying, you can last.
There'll be, there's a pile down there that you can always go to look.
Really?
In fact, you probably, Mrs. Beller, you might even allow him to take your job.
Hey, hey.
Maybe next year, we'll see.
Good education. But it's good.
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Abstention so carried. And you sent out the financial reports today? Last night?
Yeah.
Any questions on that? Any committee reports on airport?
Sure. Uh, highway, so far this year, we, from three-one to three-eighteen, we've been out three times. We've been for 21.5 hours overtime. Same time last year, three-one to three-eighteen, we were out eight times and worked 200 hours of overtime. We ordered 200 tons of salt, two-one to two-three-eighteen, that should be three-one. And last year, we ordered 400 tons, about the same size. Plow truck 50, we had to replace the oil pan and coolant tube for the turbo. We have received 20 applications for the opening at the town Messina Highway Department. I will review those applications and I'll assume I'll set up interviews next week.
I'm not sure if you're up for it.
Right. Well, we'll have to look at that.
Okay, so I'm going to write bold?
Bold.
Okay. Spring cleanup, there's been a change of mattresses and box springs. Every time somebody brings a mattress or a box springs during our spring cleanup, we will be charged $8 for each box spring or mattress. So obviously, that's additional cost that was not budgeted. I don't know if it's over our budgeted number, but if we don't take them, we're probably going to find some others and have to take them anyways, so.
Wait, great.
Right, so we didn't go over.
That'll be, that'll be wet and it'll weigh twice as much.
We added, I think, a thousand more. So.
And what was the, the deal before they would accept it?
Yes, they took them. There was a company that took them and recycled them. Now if anybody wants it anymore, so. So they had to build a, they built a building that they have to put them in and they have to get rid of them. They have to, somebody has to, they have to get rid of them now. And I want to tell you, you see, you see box springs and mattresses.
For them.
Always.
So I'm looking for your, just making sure you're aware that you're okay with that. We're going to, either that or they're going to, it's going to end up somewhere else.
I agree with Frank. If you don't accept it, it'll be on the side of the road somewhere.
So we're all okay?
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, Messina, the airport boutique air is numbers for February 714. Cancel for weather 13, others eight. A big improvement there. January 2020's, February's landings were 77. Asking for, I already did that. I already did that. Airport shipwork, obviously, the library's closed, museum's closed. Got some late-breaking news today before I left. Dig Safely has notified everybody that they are down to a limited staff. So if you plan on doing any kind of digging, you're probably not going to do it. They only are responding to emergencies. And obviously, until this is over with, we won't be digging any more. The FAA also sent me some information. Since we're publicly, we're an FAA-funded airport, we can't just shut an airport down without their approval and process. So there's a, there's a procedure here that, that they gave us that we have to follow.
Of course, we can't, we can't use it for any non-aeronautical events.
Yeah.
Like a shelter or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And then Morton Salt, who supplies us with roll salt, says they're shutting down their operation as of today and hopefully we have a solid pick for the rest of them, which we do. That's all I got.
I have a report, okay?
Yep.
Rescue squad, they provided a recap of hours of service, calls to hospitals, vehicle repair costs, and one vehicle that showed they overspent the budget by $2,331.88. Questions for again, asked this month, reasance about retirement plan with reference to a plan used in Queensbury with reference to a 2014 year long judgment school, Article 11 for ambulance workers. Discuss for the existence of a capital reserve account, Medicaid funds to town through MOU, and transports other than for 911. And Roger's got some plans going up for people that they'll find out about, I guess. And the next meeting's April 13th. As far as the library, they did meet on March 10th. A budget resolution for 202021 and a proposition to approve petitions before the school board meeting, which is going to be tomorrow night, I think, it's still going on. Also discuss for salaries, insurance, public meetings, legal issues, rebranding and advertising before the vote on June 16th to transition to a district library. Additionally, census training will be provided free to assist residents on completion of the form, which makes me wonder because if it's, it's closed right now, everybody's getting the census in, well, I don't know how they're going to build up to that. All other, because it's got to go online. All other monthly business agenda items completed as usual with information on establishing a pandemic policy, which they've been proactive on. And their next meeting's April 14th.
They are sending letters out after the census that if you don't do it online, they're going to be sending paper ones out.
Will they do that now?
I got one in the mail from my parents.
I think, yeah, online?
So?
I did too, but then another envelope came saying if you don't do it by law, whatever, they're going to, if you don't get that, they're going to send you a paper version.
Yeah, so. It's really easy to do. I got mine in two minutes, it's done.
So what the, what the process is, yes, the first thing they do is online. If you don't respond online, they'll send you one to complete in the mail because they assume that you don't have online resources.
Correct.
You don't fill the one out that they send you to the house, then somebody will be knocking on your door. So that's, that's the process.
That's the third step.
That's the third step. So if you don't want somebody knocking on your door, complete one of the first two.
So people who don't have computers, if they have someone, they can help them since the library now closed. Hopefully, that will expedite their situations.
And then I, I went to go do my first joint recreation committee, but yeah, once, nobody, nobody was there. So you got my, my email on, on the same synopsis that some of us repeat what, what was there with Sue. The culture center museum board, again, it's closed, so they have a lot of plans for things, but we'll have to wait and see how that, how that all works out right now because they, they were talking about it on the Rockwell display, donation for a 1890's gun and handcuffs from a, a town council over here from that era, which I thought was interesting. And then of course, Sam got the relief maps that he'd like to display and he had discussed ideas on how to display those. So, so there's, there's things going on, but again, we're in a kind of a, we're in a sea boat now.
I made the point for that, so that you lost. The town Messina generally and specifically the lot of the museum lost a very valued member.
Oh, yes.
The board, David Telleri. Tough to fill those shoes.
Yeah, he was on the board. I was on 14 years. I was on the museum board. He was on the board most of those years. Always there at every meeting, always very helpful.
Always had a story to tell.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Some of them true. Well, and also the former village trustee, John Feely.
John Feely.
Two great Kennedy members. They will be missed. Any other?
One thing on the branding logo, the report, maybe you'll oversee that as well. So the logo polling came back, 1,288 submissions. Jason also sent that out to other areas, Long Island Tourism Group, National Fishing Group, National Kayak Group, and other chambers to get feedback as well on the logos. Continuing to work on the website and the phone app that will go along with that. Tony Zaffia contacted me about the retriever training grounds and getting them hooked in on that new website. So I connected him with Jason and they've been working together. Tony will, will supply some write-ups and pictures and stuff for that aspect of the, of the website. And hopefully, we can continue on our work via email, which a lot of it has been done back and forth to keep things moving with the branding aspect of this. And then from there, hopefully, we can be, website developed and be moving on with that.
Did we, has there been the decision or the voting closed?
Not yet, actually. I asked for a, a report on that. Jason's working on that. Once he gets that together, we'll probably do emails back and forth with the virus going on and maybe have like actually a, a meeting, virtual meeting anyway or something and get things moving. So we're not the exact numbers yet. a meeting, uh, virtual meeting anyway or something and get things moving. So we're not the exact numbers yet, uh, we'll see what, how they come out. And, uh, when Steve and I didn't make it down to, uh, Cornell to get the relief maps, and that was quite a trip, but, uh, the snow was.
They also appeared, or found out that they were a lot bigger than we thought.
They are bigger and heavy.
Yep. And heavy.
So yeah, I had to, uh, plan a couple of different ideas to be able to display them. Uh, they are quite interesting.
Yeah, if anybody doesn't know, it was of the St. Lawrence Seaway, New York Power Authority before and after, and it was made out of woods, but.
Layers of plywood that were sculpted with a layer of, uh, uh, some sort of a rubberized membrane or something. And they actually had, uh, uh, water inlet and outlet, so they'd actually flow water through that to show the water flowing through the river before the, uh, power project and locks and then after.
And we have no idea where they came from.
No.
They were at Cornell and Cornell University gave them to us.
Funny story. I ran into somebody who worked there and said they were there and sent me pictures and they worked on, uh, trying to get them shipped up there, but ended up picking them up, done up ourselves.
County, uh, had a conversation with St. Lawrence County Emergency Services, unbelievable, can't, uh, hand sanitizer. Um, and some masks and some Tyvek's too. And Steve did not have any.
Products though.
Products. Nobody's got it, they're out.
I talked to Tanya about Corecraft. I sent you the link to Corecraft. I don't know if they have any at all. They, they send the hand san, they're making their own hand sanitizer now. They plan on ramping that up, but they're restricting it to, I guess, the more affected areas.
We want the Valley Paper. They got a shipment of cleaner in, but it's, it's already, it's already being sent to hospitals. Uh, there's already people that have signed up for it, so we couldn't get any.
Alright, so I mentioned that as well at the, uh, MED meeting, um, that the county may have some supplies. I don't know.
That's pretty much all they have. It's, they don't have any, no paper, no paper towels, no, no further paper. No frozen food, no.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it may, it needs a mask if they have to go to a residence or whatever, so I will send an email. Who was the contact there?
Uh, I talked with, uh, Demmer, Demmer, um.
Omar, Matt Danner?
Met that, yeah. He's the one who gave me, put me in contact with the guy that's in charge of dispensing or getting.
Very good.
Alrighty, next meeting will be April fifteenth at five thirty.
Next day.
The original tax day. But before we adjourn, uh, we have to make a motion to go on executive session, so.
Second.
Discuss potential contract or.
Litigation?
Patenting with wrong litigation.
Good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension so carried. No, you can go.
Okay, good, so, alright, so.
We went into executive session at six.
You'll let me know tomorrow what time you come out?